Yeah.
Yeah, he's been using that, what, probably a couple months now? No, but I mean, yeah, his iPad. The first two meetings he used it, paper, and then he, that's it. Yeah.
The Monday, December eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three City of Vandelia Council meeting is now called to order. We'll start with a moment of reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which this state is one nation, with all due respect, with liberty and justice as our goal.
All right, council, next we have the approval of minutes. We have the council study session minutes of November twentieth, the council meeting minutes of November twentieth also. Are there any comments or corrections? Being none, I stand approved, and that brings us to communications, petitions, and awards. And we have a introduction by City Manager Went.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. There are a couple of items under this section, hence the full room. The, first, I'd like to ask our former city engineer, Ben Borton, and our new public service director, Ben Borton, to go ahead and stand up. He's here with his wife, Ally, and then also Glenn, their one-year-old son, is here, as well, as well as Ben's mom and his in-laws. And so, thank you, everybody, for, for coming. You'll recall that Mr. Borton is a butler, a butler grad. He's an Eagle Scout. He's got a bachelor's degree in civil engineering. He was working on the private side out in Colorado Springs. And I like to joke with him that all Ohioans who move out to Colorado Springs, when they have a baby, they have to move back to Ohio to be close to family, and we sure are glad that we could take advantage of that. Mr. Borton's been a very active learner, and I, since he's been on here, and he's, he's impressed all of us. When we originally met, I, I spoke with Ben about purposeful development and career ladders at the City of Vandelia. And I said to him at Warehouse Four that I would like for him to recognize that we're hiring him to be the city engineer, but at three, five years, when Rob Cron retired, it would be my intention that he'd have a three-to-five-year interview and become the service director. That's been accelerated with Mr. Cron's promotion to Assistant City Manager. And so, I sat down with Ben, I sat down with our senior staff, with the folks who have been able to work around him, and his universal confidence, and not only Ben's probability for success, but the desire of the people who are around him, who want him to be successful, and that includes me and Rob Cron. And so, really proud of you, Ben, and congrats on the really quick promotion. Thank you. Next, what I'll do is I will introduce Mr. Malcolm Dennis, who is our newest police officer. And, Mr. Dennis, would you just, yep, please stand up. And I've got right here, Mr. Dennis lives in Englewood. He joined us relatively recently and graduated from, graduated from the academy. He holds a Bachelor's of Criminal Justice from Wright State University, and then also an associate from Sinclair Community College. Previously, he's worked at Bowtowns and Ford, and also was at the Montgomery County Sheriff's Office for some time while he was putting himself through academy. I have it under good authority that the Englewood Police Department really wanted him, but they just could not have him. And so, without further ado, I'll go ahead and I'll swear in, Mr. Dennis. All right, we're gonna make sure so that we can hear everybody, and yeah, come right up here. Yeah, that's, that's why, that's why, okay, we're gonna put you right here. Mrs. Dennis, please, go ahead and stand kinda right there, and we'll get this worked out. I, Malcolm Dennis, solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution and will obey the laws of the United States and of the state of Ohio. That I will, in all respects, observe the provisions of the Charter and ordinances of the City of Vandelia, and will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of police officer within the Division of Police. Congratulations, officer. Thank you.
Oh, did you?
Yeah. All right, next up, I've got Assistant City Manager, Rob Cron. And I'll just give a brief introduction, although you probably don't need one. Rob, can you go ahead and stand up? Rob has, grew up at the City of Vandelia. He, he grew up at the City of Vandelia. The city hired him on full-time before he was out of college. He's got a bachelor's degree in science from the, from Bowling Green State University, where I will say some of our finest employees graduated from that institution, and they even let Bob graduate. The, the, Rob has been the public service director for the last eleven years. I will tell you, there are a whole bunch of things that I could go through. One thing that I'm most impressed with and what merits Rob Cron's promotion, in addition to his experience, is his commitment to serving the residents of Vandelia. Through and through, I've seen Rob, again and again, make the right decision for the right reasons for the residents of Vandelia, whether that's protecting some portion of infrastructure that nobody is going to dig up and see for thirty years, whether it's coming down to the city manager's office and saying, this is what I think the most true and best personnel decision is that we can make, even if it's one I don't necessarily like in that moment. And you need people around you who you can trust are always going to make good decisions revolving around those policy goals and their core values. Rob Cron is a leader, and I would characterize him as somebody who leads from the middle in that he doesn't always have to be up front, but commands a presence from example. And so, I'm really proud to work with him, and, Rob, I'm really excited. Would you bring your family up here? We've got Carrie and Troy and Heidi, and we'll go ahead and we'll do your swearing. Get together like you guys like him, you know, it's a... He had his weekly bath six days ago, should be good. All right, Rob, will you please raise your right hand? I, Rob Cron, solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution and will obey the laws of the United States and of the state of Ohio. That I will, in all respects, observe the provisions of the Charter and ordinances of the City of Vandelia, and will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Assistant City Manager. Excellent, congratulations, ACM.
All right, next we have a proclamation for Roger Pratt for his fifty-eight years of service to the City of Vandelia. So if you could join us up here like the others have. Well, first of all, congratulations on fifty-eight years. I mean, some of us up here were around when you started working here. So, that's quite a, quite a service to our community. So what we'd like to do is give you this proclamation and just acknowledge, you know, the great accomplishments that you've provided here for our city. I'd like to go ahead and read it to you. Whereas the City of Vandelia relies on the contributions of many employees to provide the services and amenities of top-tier community provides. And whereas Roger Pratt's tenure with the City of Vandelia began in nineteen sixty-five, when he accepted a part-time position offered by former Parks and Recreation Director, Art Van Atta. And whereas, since nineteen sixty-five, Roger has fulfilled a number of roles with the Parks and Recreation, most recently as the head of, the head official of our adult softball league. And whereas, Roger Pratt has provided more than fifty-eight years of dedicated service to the citizens of the City of Vandelia through his work with Vandelia Parks and Recreation. And whereas, throughout his years of service, Roger Pratt has been a consummate professional, a fair and respected arbiter of the rules, and a good friend for those who have participated in programming. And whereas Roger Pratt has ended his distinguished career in Vandelia Parks and Recreation Department with his retirement on October twelfth, two thousand twenty-three. Now, therefore, I, Richard Herbst, by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Vandelia, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, December nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three, as Roger Pratt Day here in Vandelia. Congratulations.
Thanks, thanks very much, yeah. Hey, it's been a, a great, great trip through the fifty-eight years. I really enjoyed it. And, yeah, I know the hat's kinda, kinda silly, but, hey, you know, if you're not gonna wear it this month, when are you gonna wear it? It would look kinda silly if it was July or something, you know. My daughter got this for me last year. I thought I better wear it some. And, you know, we're the, we're the recreation department. We don't take ourselves too seriously, you know, we're here to have fun. Now, we take our jobs very seriously, but we don't take ourselves all that seriously. But I just want to thank a lot of people along the way that have really helped me through this fifty-eight years. I can't believe it's been fifty-eight years when I graduated from Ohio University back in nineteen sixty-five. That's nineteen sixty-five. And then, like the mayor said, started with the rec department in the fall there. Actually, in the summertime, I worked down at Merlin Heights Playgrounds down there for Montgomery County. But then, I, in the fall, is when I start working for the City of Vandelia. And I've been a part-time with them ever since, doing things like starting off, you know, running the playgrounds and doing youth programs like youth flag football and youth basketball. Then I kinda went on to run a lot of programs, co-ed programs, adult programs, like drop-in volleyball. I did that for quite a while, and, just, just many different, different programs. So I wanted to thank Steve Clark, he couldn't be here tonight. But I was asking Jeff when he started, and he was telling me, what, what year was it? Eighty?
Eighty-eight, eighty-nine, right around there.
About eighty-eight, eighty-nine, well, I'd only already been working for about twenty-five years when he came on board, and he's been on board forever, you know, so. And, and Steve, of course, is, he's the, the number-one man of the entire Parks Recreation here in Vandelia, and he's made, you know, some fantastic contributions moving the program forward. And then I wanna thank Jeff, of course. Jeff, I've known Jeff for a long time. I knew Jeff when he was an elementary physical education teacher, as I was, in the Vandelia school system. And then they demoted Jeff up to the high school physical education program. And he was, of course, the varsity basketball coach for a long time. And somehow or other, the city kinda pulled him away from the school system and got him on board with the, with the city. And he's been a great contribution. I wanna thank John, worked with John for the last several years, John Meyer. John is, I call John Mister Inside, and I'm Mister Outside. I, I'm at the fields, the softball fields, running the programs outside there every night. And John is in the office and does all the paperwork and the scheduling and, and all that stuff. So I think, I think we've been a pretty good team here for, for several years, John, thanks a lot. And actually, before John, I was working with Alicia. Alicia had the same position that John now has. That was before she became the, the head person there at, at the rec department, at the rec center. And I always like to stop in and see Alicia whenever I get back in town. At least every few months, I go into her office, and I always look forward to a good, big hug from Alicia. And, of course, some other people I wanna thank along the way. Hank Owens, many of you know, know Hank. He was a great guy to work with. Kathy Spoggy, fantastic person. And of course, Art Van Atta, who I started with, and what a guy, you know. I had four years of college education for teaching physical education, but just a few months with Art Van Atta was more than what I got from four years of college. Great guy. Yeah, I go clear back to, well, like I said, I, I met, I met Steve. Actually, I was at the ballpark, and Dean Nardekia brought him around one, one evening, and when he first came and introduced me, and I, I remember that night very well, when, when he met me there at, over at Helkey Park, at the ballparks. Yeah, I go way back to Rusty Tom Winston. I don't know if any of you people remember Rusty Tom Winston, but he, he was a pioneer in the rec department here in Vandelia. Some of the other people that I, that I work with, and I brought this just so I wouldn't forget people, and I'll, I'll probably forget somebody anyway, and I, I'm sorry about that, but, yeah, I'm eighty years old. I can forget it every once in a while. But anyhow, you know, working with Ron Nickel, some of you remember Ron Nickel. Dave Posma, he was, he was one of my umpires. Great guy. Just a little story about Dave Posma. So he's, he's umpiring my games for me, and it's game time, and so, one team, one team took the field, and, and he called for the batter to come up, and, and the batting team, they were just kinda screwing around over there on the bench, just taking a good old sweet time. And he says, "Strike one." And that got, that got him moving right away. That got the batter up there right away when he said that. That was Dave Posma. I wanna also recognize one of my umpires that I've worked with for the last, I don't know, seven, eight years, Steve Martin, an excellent umpire, that has really made my job very easy, because he really keeps all the games under control very well. So, like I said, that makes my job easy, 'cause he does such a great job. I've had a lot of good umpires, some umpires better than others, but, you know, good umpires. I remember one umpire, I think his first name was Tom, and he had trouble making a, a decision on a, on a close call. So, you know, when it would be a close call, whether it was a strike or a ball, he would just kinda stand there, you know, and the batter would say, "Well, is it a strike or is it a ball?" "Well, you know what it is." He would say, "You know what it is." And then, if there'd be a close play at, at second base, the guy was sliding into second base, and it was a close call, he'd run out there, get out from under, from out behind home plate and run out by second, and he'd go out there and get go. You know, and they'd say, "Well, is he safe or is he out?" Well, he had a little trouble coming up with this decision, but he, he finally made this decision. That's the, just a couple other little funny things, if, if you will allow me to do this. What? Okay, thank you, thank you, I'll, I'll take it. Yeah, so, we did a lot of special programs with the recreation department. This is clear back when Art Van Atta and I were doing a lot of those special events, like we would do bike rides from, organize bike rides with kids and their parents. We would start down at Wagerston Garden Center and go clear down to Carol Ann Park and back. We did that several summers, once each summer. Art was always really involved in lifetime sports. And I remember one time he had a, a big event up at the high school, and he would have experts on canoeing, swimming, hunting, trapping, archery, the, the lifetime sports thing, fishing. He was big on fishing, and that was, that was a lot of fun, doing events like that with him. Another special event that we had was, we would do, we had a walking club in our Sister City program. We had within that a walking club called Volk's Marching. I don't know if you've ever heard of it. It's actually, Volk's March is a German word, means a people walk. It's a ten-kilometer walk, it's non-competitive, but we would sponsor one of those each year here in Vandelia. We'd have it right around Halloween time, and we'd call it the Witch's Walk. And we called it that for several years, but somebody complained about the name of it, and they said that, that wasn't a good name, it was, they, they didn't like that. So we had to change the name from Witch's Walk to, to something else. But anyhow, I remember preparing for this Volk's March. I would set up trail markers along the way, and it would be a ten-kilometer route around Vandelia. And so, this was sponsored by the city and the Vandelia Sister City. So we'd always use one of the city's trucks when we'd put up the signs for Volk's Marching. So I remember, you know, jumping out of the truck and tacking up an arrow, an arrow sign, and, and then it would go on for another hundred yards. So anyhow, this is when Bruce Suker was the city manager. And so, he, he pulls up behind us, and, see, I, I had a friend of mine driving the van while I would jump out and put the, put the marker signs up. And so, Bruce pulls up behind us, he says, says, "I've been city manager for five years, and I've never had a driver." So anyhow, I could, I could go on a whole lot, but I, I don't wanna bore you with all this stuff. But I've had, I've had a great fifty-eight years. I think it's kind of ironic, we have Mr. Dennis being sworn in as a, as a police officer, and I'm kinda being sworn out as recreation person here, so. Thank you very much.
There you go. All right, that's your proclamation, and we appreciate, again, everything you've done. And to me, it sounds like it took you fifty-eight years to get everybody trained well enough that you felt comfortable going ahead and retiring. All right, okay, thank you. All right, now we have a proclamation for Councilmember Woods and a proclamation for Councilmember Bob Ayers. So as tradition dictates, if all council members should come down, and we'll do this all together. Well, you guys, you guys can all come down here. We're all one big happy family, let's all join in. You can't stand there, Bob. Oh, you're fine. Stop. All right. Well, Candace has been, or Candace, Connie, it's been wonderful serving with you here the last four years, and I'm not sure that, when the last time we had a CPA on, city council, but Connie's been very instrumental in helping us through the budget process. She helped us through a software migration, but, you know, saved us thousands and thousands of dollars, and we all appreciate all the service that you provided here for the City of Vandelia. So I'd like to go ahead and read the proclamation. One, two, three, about five wheres, so it won't be too bad. All right, whereas the City of Vandelia relies on the competent, experienced leadership of elected officials to provide outstanding service to the community it serves. And whereas, Constance Woods was elected to the Vandelia City Council November of two thousand nineteen. And whereas, her tenure on city council has been marked by progress and notable accomplishments, including a more thorough and comprehensive focus on financial reporting, a critical infrastructure project impacting all city buildings, and the utilization of federal funding to improve the lives of residents of all ages. And whereas, Constance Woods served faithfully as a member of the Vandelia Development Corporation, playing a key role in attracting new companies and new jobs to Vandelia. And whereas, Constance Woods has won the friendship and respect of her council colleagues, city staff, and those from throughout the community with whom she has come, and to contact through her open and straightforward communication, strong leadership, and her unfailing good nature. And whereas, Constance Woods will end her distinguished career as a city council member on December of two thousand twenty-three. And now, therefore, I, Richard Herbst, by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Vandelia, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, December twentieth, two thousand twenty-three, as Constance Woods' Day here in the City of Vandelia. Congratulations. If you open that up, we also have a small gift there for you. It's sealed up, so I couldn't get into it to find out what was all in there. You'll have to let us know what's in there. All right. And at this time, I'd like to, you know, pass the mic around, and if anyone would like to make any comments or anything, we could do that at this time.
Well, it's, it's certainly true that Connie is extraordinary, especially in her field of financing, and has been a, a great asset to the VDC, the Vandelia Development Corps, and we'll miss you greatly.
Thank you.
Well, after, I've had twelve years on city council, and I look at these other city council members, I can truly say that Connie Woods is the only one that treated me with respect over the last four years. That I truly... over the last four years that I truly reserved. Thank you.
It's a public meeting, or I would use a really bad term to describe what you just said, Bob. But with that being said, Ms. Woods, Connie and I were elected together on Council in 2019. Connie has a very special, I think, relationship with the city, having, being a business owner here in the city for over 40 years. She's established herself in the community as a true community leader, serving with the Chamber of Commerce, representing accountancy at the state level, being on the board at the state level for many years, including chairperson. And I think, as the mayor said and Mike said, Connie brought a very unique vision to Council at a time when it was much needed. And I have a lot of respect for Connie and her service over the past four years, and have gotten to know Connie personally, and have a great friendship with her as well. So appreciate that, and best of luck. Thank you.
Gosh, you guys said some nice things, and just want to thank her for her years. Oh, that's all right. Thanks. It's quite a job. People don't realize it, but you put a lot of time and effort into it. I appreciate it. Connie's on Rotary, serves on various boards around the city, and has done a great job, so.
All right, well, thank you very much. All right, now we have Councilman Ayers. Happy he's already started smarting off. All right, I've appreciated working with you, Bob. But we'll get to that in a minute. All right. Whereas the city of Vandelia and its residents have prospered throughout this community's history as a result, in part, of the dedicated leadership of qualified, honest, and hard-working individuals serving in local government. And whereas, Bob Ayers was elected to Vandelia City Council in 2012, and has served honorably as a City Council Member for 12 years. Whereas, throughout his career, Bob has exhibited exemplary dedication to the best interests of the city of Vandelia, and has worked continually for the betterment of local economic, cultural, social, and aesthetic development, while forging goodwill and friendship locally and nationally. Whereas, landmarks of Bob's leadership provide an eternal reminder of his contribution to the city's well-being, including his years of service on the golf advisory board. Doesn't help you play better golf, does it? Whereas Bob Ayers has earned the admiration and high regard of all those whom he has come in contact with, as well as the affection of his fellow public servants, all who are proud to call him friend. Friend. Now, therefore, I, Richard Herbst, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Vandelia, do hereby proclaim Thursday, December 21st, 2023, as Bob Ayers' Day here in the city of Vandelia. Here's your proclamation, and we have, again, some sealed items that I don't know what they are in there. But if they're golf passes, I expect to be invited. But... Do what? Well, I've served with Bob for eight years now, and it's been, it's been a true joy. You know, in our meetings, it's just amazing. We have a very well-rounded council, and you know, Bob retiring from, you know, all those years at NCR, a lot of times will, he would throw out ideas, hey, this is what we did at NCR. And sometimes, I mean, we look at our council like, oh, that's a good idea. Maybe we ought to consider something like that. But I've really, truly enjoyed working with you. This past spring, Bob invited me to play in a golf league, the Castle Hills Golf League. And I'm a lousy golfer. I mean, I am terrible. So I have never played in a league or anything before because I'm so bad. Actually, I've never even kept score. But after the first week of playing with Bob, I realized, maybe I'm not that bad. So... Now, he started it. Now, Bob, did we go wire to wire in last place, or did we come out of last place at any time this whole season?
It was the whole time.
All right. So Bob and I decided, we're really not golfers. We just go out on the golf course and hit the ball around. Because if you don't like where it lands, you just pick it up and move it. Okay? We kind of come up with our own set of rules out there. But again, I appreciate Bob's friendship, and I love playing with him. I mean, we had a hoot. I mean, I look forward to every Thursday night out there with you. And we wish you continued success, and we're going to miss you.
Yes, you've given me so much support in our financial decisions here on Council, and I really appreciate all of your experience that you've lent and served as a mentor to me, and always had lent an ear when I had a question or an issue. Thank you.
It's been a long 12 years. But it's really been good. Appreciate it. We share a lot of information. This has been a good council. We help each other and work together well. But I was asked to only talk about his golf game. I will miss you, and I don't know who's going to sit next to me, but I'm sure we won't tell the whispers that have been going
So, Bob, you brought a unique perspective to Council since you created the cash register at NCR. And you had a lot of, just joking. So, one thing I respect about Bob is, you know, Bob is never shy about giving his opinion. And even though there's been times that we've disagreed in discussions, Bob has never let it become a personal issue. And I think that says a lot about him and his professionalism and his dedication to Council over the years. And enjoy your retirement. I'm sure I'll still see you in the neighborhood on occasion.
Are you moving?
No, not moving. So I'll still see you in the neighborhood. But thank you, Bob, for your 12 years of service to the citizens.
Bob, we're going to miss you. I don't know who we'll have now to replace you to feel that we're in the NCR boardroom. You know, your insight has been great influence, I think, on all of us, and I think all of us would agree. And there's one thing that you always have been helpful in, is keeping us on track or keeping us on course. And there's many times where, you know, we've had discussion, and it's gone on and on and on, and you kind of brought us back and focused and say, hey, where are we at with this? Let's get her done. And yeah, well, that was another Councilmember. But really appreciate that and helping us keep focused. And others have said that, you know, your opinion had mattered, and we looked at that, and it wasn't, it was for the best of Vandelia. And so really appreciate serving with, with you and Connie.
One thing I just realized was maybe missing from his proclamation is, he did serve two years as Vice Mayor of the city of Vandelia, and did a great job filling in on, you know, a couple occasions when I couldn't be there, and we certainly appreciate that.
Is it, is it Mike turn?
Hold on, let me see that. Turn it off.
Now, I have a few words to say about each Councilman. And let me start with Candy. You know, we were at the Christmas outing for the Chamber of Commerce, I think it was last Wednesday. And when you get a little bit of alcohol in you, the truth comes out. So I'm sitting beside Candy, and she called me a boo-boo head. Now, I don't have a clue what that means, but I don't think it was a compliment. So, and then Candy is always ragging on me about sitting down too soon when we're saying the Pledge of Allegiance. But the fact of the matter is, she stands right behind me, and as I'm listening to her, she's mumbling and stumbling around. And after 20-plus years of being on Council, and 25 to 30 meetings a year of saying her pledge of allegiance, I don't think she knows the words to it yet. So, something you should probably work on. And then, at the same session with our lestrous mayor, Richard Herbst, I asked him if we were going to be partners again next summer. And he told me that since I'm now dropping off City Council, I've suddenly become a nobody. And what he really wanted was somebody with some status next year again. So I'm not sure how that's going to turn out. And then we have Cory. Cory, as he mentioned earlier, we have been on opposite sides of a few issues, and we've discussed them. And last summer, he was walking the dog down our street, and the dog relieved himself in my front yard, and Cory didn't clean it up. So I think this was a clear message he was trying to send to me. So let that be that. And Dave Lewis, Dave, I hope you're watching tonight, as, as he had heart surgery a week or so ago. So, but there's been times when a few subjects or policies or procedures required quite a bit of discussion. And we'd all speak our minds on the issue, and then Dave would start in. Now, as many of you know, Dave actually has a law degree. And so when he would start in, he would give us about a 15, 20-minute lecture. It's like he's litigating a case. He's using legal terms and words that I've never heard of. And I don't think anybody understood where the hell he stood on the issue, but we just thanked him and said, let's move on. So there you go. And Mike Blakesley, Mike, steady, strong, Mike Blakesley. Never had an opportunity to interact with Mike all that much over the 12 years. Really wasn't in need to. And but I always enjoyed his family and his lovely wife, has a beautiful voice, that sings on church on Sunday morning. So that's what I always looked forward to. And Connie, thanks again for treating me with respect over the years. Thank you.
All right. Do you want to recognize your family or anything?
I'd also like to recognize my lovely wife, Pegs, here, with my granddaughter Avery, my daughter Carrie, my grandson Kayden, and my son-in-law Kevin. So thanks all for coming.
You want a picture? You want a picture with this man? Yeah, get a picture.
Yep, now is a perfectly acceptable time to leave. Thank you so much.
I had these comments that I was going to say, and my brother told me this morning.
Hope you got me a rec center back.
All right, now that we've all thoroughly lost our place this evening, we're going to go ahead and get back on the agenda. We have no public hearing tonight, and that brings us to comments from interested citizens. So if anyone would like to make a comment, please come to the podium, state your name, an address for the record, and your comment. We'll move on to the City Manager's Report, where we have an information item and an action item. Mr. Went?
Thank you very much, Your Honor. A couple of quick updates first. Thank you very much to City Council for providing the employees with the Employee Appreciation Day today. That was a very nice gesture with turkey's hands and gift cards that employees were able to choose from. Thank you very much to both Councilmember Woods, Councilmember Ayers, for your service on City Council. It has been a pleasure and a privilege working for you, and I look forward to still seeing you and visiting you in the community. This week, well, last week, I think Amber Avalotus Weaver and I, I'll go out there on a limb, and I'll say, we had a lot of fun in part one of our Councilmember onboarding process. And so we went through a lot of documents and saw a couple of places, and so we'll be circling back to do part two. And then later this week, I'll be doing the same thing with Councilmember-elect Dugan. And so looking forward to that. The, this week, I got to speak at the Police Division Meeting last week, and give the first version of the State of the City presentation. I always like to give that a couple of times throughout the departments, but also, it's good practice ahead of time. On the 20th, the Wednesday, the annual report and calendar will go out. The city will make a contribution in recognition of the work that the Honors Society Scholarship Fund, for what they, for the, in recognition of the Honors Society's contributions in distributing that. And of course, that contribution is less than what it would cost to mail that. Next update, city offices will be closed on Christmas, December 25th, and then also the day after Christmas, the 26th. The, will be closed on Monday, January 1st, in observation of the New Year holiday. The first council meeting in January, and the second council meeting in January will both be on Tuesdays. And so Tuesday, January 2nd. Of course, on the 24th, the rec center will be open 7:00 a.m. until noon from the fitness area, track and gymnasium only. December 25th, the VRC will be closed. The 31st, VRC will open 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., closed on New Year's Day. With those items in consideration, if it's okay, Your Honor, I'll move right into action items. There are, there are a few action items that are before you, two major action items. And I just want to make sure that I don't mess this up. I've enclosed here a memo for a request to reappoint Mr. Pete Brydenbach and Frank Keesh to the Local Board of Tax Review. There also is a note, Mr. Forrest Moses has requested to be reappointed to the Civil Service Commission. He, of course, is my appointee as the city manager. He was appointed prior to my arrival here, but I will go ahead and I will, I will reappoint him. And so with that, I would just ask for a simple motion, if you're agreeable, to appoint Mr. Brydenbach and Mr. Keesh to the Local Board of Tax Review.
All right, so we have a motion by, I believe it was Councilman Folic, and a second by Councilwoman Woods to appoint, reappoint Pete Brydenbach to the Local Board of Tax Review. Any comments? All right, we also have a, need a motion to, do we have to do these individually, Jerry, or can we do it by acclamation?
If anybody wants us to do it separately, they can speak now, and otherwise, we can do it jointly.
Well, good. Go together? All right. And also Frank Keesh requesting reappointment to the Local Board of Tax Review. So again, I have a motion by Councilman Blakesley, and a second by Councilwoman Forrest. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Forrest?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Folic?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion passes 6-0.
All right, the next, the next item, action item that I have, Mr. Kevin Larger has requested appointment to the Board of Zoning Appeals. And I've had the privilege of working with Mr. Larger on several fronts, in the Rotary Club, in his business, his business that he has here in town, and then also just being a resident on Estelle. And in my couple of years, I've gotten some really good insight from Mr. Larger, and I've enjoyed working for or with him. And so I'm really pleased to see his application come in for the Board of Zoning Appeals. And if, if Council is agreeable to appointing Mr. Larger to the Board of Zoning Appeals, I just ask for a simple motion for his appointment, followed by a swear-in.
Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilwoman Woods and a second by Councilman Blakesley to approve, uh, Mr. Larger to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Call the roll.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Forrest?
Yes.
And Councilmember, or Mayor Herbs?
Uh, yes, and the motion passes six-zero. So Kevin, if you could join me down here for the, uh, oath of office. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Kevin Larger, Larger solemnly swear.
I, Kevin Larger solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And will obey the laws of the United States.
And will obey the laws of the United States.
And the state of Ohio.
And the state of Ohio.
That I will, in all respects.
That I will, in all respects.
Observe the provisions of the Charter.
Observe the provisions of the Charter.
And ordinances of the City of Vandelia.
And ordinances of the City of Vandelia.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
Associated with the position I'm undertaking.
Associated with the position that I'm undertaking.
Congratulations. Definitely getting our steps in here tonight. All right, we have no old business and that brings us to our first resolution of this evening, that being Resolution twenty-three dash R dash eighty-three. Mr. McDonald by title only.
A resolution awarding the bid for city facility signage and city identification signage retrofit project requested by Parks and Recreation Department to Geograph Industries, Inc., at the lowest and best bid price of three hundred thirty-one thousand, six hundred sixty-nine dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Wendt.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. Um, I would also say to the Larger family, if, if you want to hang out the whole council meeting, that's great, but also you don't, you also don't have to. And so I usually say that after we do the oath of office, not that I'm saying go, you can stay. It's going to get good.
They're thinking about it. I think his wife wants to stay.
So this evening I gave, uh, quite a bit of testimony in the study session on behalf of Director Clark for the city facility signage and city identification signage retrofit project. Um, we opened bids on Wednesday, December sixth. We had delayed that bid opening at the advice of Kohler, our designer, because of the Thanksgiving holiday and we believed that we would get more, um, competitive bids. I advised council of that and, and as a consequence of delaying that bid opening and given our current appropriation cycle, I've requested to be able to present this in study session today and then request an award. The scope of this includes, uh, entry and gateway retrofits at eight locations, municipal building identification signs, Justice Center building and parking lot identification signs, um, and then park identification signs. We had bids that ranged from three hundred and thirty-one thousand to six hundred and sixty-nine thousand, all the way up to seven hundred and thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars. The estimate for the project was four hundred and fifty-six thousand. And so with that being said, I'd recommend awarding the contract, um, for this project to Geograph Industries, Inc., as the lowest and best bid at their price of three hundred and thirty-one thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars. They have the capabilities of completing the entire project in-house, including all the fabrication, along with the stone and brickwork. The completion date is set for May thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
All right, thank you. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve Resolution twenty-three R eighty-three.
Clear. Have a motion by, uh, Councilman Blakesley and a second by Councilman Ayers to approve Resolution twenty-three dash R dash eighty-three as presented. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Forrest?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion passes six-zero. Next we have Resolution twenty-three dash R dash eighty-four.
A resolution awarding the bid for Robinette Park restroom building project requested by the Parks and Recreation to Vancon General Contractors at the lowest and bed, best bid price of three hundred thirty-one thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Wendt.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, bids were opened publicly for the Robinette Park restroom project on December sixth. The project is the first step in the redevelopment of Robinette Park as indicated in the Community Input Key Findings section of the Park and Rec Master Plan, as well as one of the areas of focus in our big moves document, the ten major recommendations out of the twenty-twenty-three Park and Rec Master Plan. Three contractors obtained the bid package through Bid Express. All three submitted bids, they ranged from three hundred and thirty-one thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars to four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred dollars. The OHM estimate for the project was three hundred and twenty-five thousand. We, in this project, we also have funding, just over sixty-one thousand dollars from the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, from a Nature Works grant, fifty thousand dollars from the Montgomery County Board of Developmental Disabilities, and nine thousand eight hundred and fifty-four dollars for the Brighter Tomorrow Foundation. The goal for this park's redevelopment includes an inclusive playground for people of all abilities, the, uh, yeah, you're good, the, um, also a splash pad and a shelter in the future. And, um, just last week, the Priority Development Advisory Committee through the Dayton Development Coalition included this Robinette Park as a recommended project, um, as we pursue an additional four hundred thousand dollars in, uh, grant funding. And so I've submitted that, uh, to the state capital budget bill. And we've also got some monies included in the, um, in the budget and the five-year forecast. Recently I reported that similar to what happened with Kohler on the other project, um, OHM advised us that they thought they would get more competitive quotes if we extended the bid deadline. Um, we took that advice. The consequence of that was presenting the bids this evening and then also requesting an award in the same evening. Um, I apologize for that inconvenience. I do believe that, um, this has come out, uh, favorable for the city. And so I would recommend awarding the contract to Vancon General Contractors as the lowest and best bid at the price of three hundred and thirty-one thousand, four hundred fifty-five dollars. There are funds currently available in the capital improvement budget for this project and Vancon successfully completed the restroom projects at both Castle Hills Golf Course and Art Park.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve Resolution twenty-three R eighty-four as presented.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Folick and a second by Councilwoman Forrest to approve Resolution twenty-three dash R dash eighty-four as presented. Are there any comments?
Just thank you for going out for all the grants. I think it'll be a great amenity.
Right, thank you. Call the roll.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Forrest?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries six-zero. Next we have Resolution twenty-three dash R dash eighty-five.
Resolution awarding the bid for the Dogleg Road Water and Sewer Sanitary, or Sewer, I'm sorry, water and sanitary sewer extension phase two requested by the Public Service Department to Outdoor Enterprises LLC at the lowest and best bid price of two million, two hundred forty-three thousand, six hundred eighty-four dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Wendt.
Thank you, Your Honor. Bids were publicly open for the Dogleg Road Water and Sanitary Sewer Extension Phase Two project on November twenty-first. Um, we presented on that in the last study session. We've included the bid tabulation sheet for the reference bids. This project will extend water and sanitary sewer to the western corporate border. Ten contractors took out bid packages, eight contractors submitted bids for the project. Those range from two million, two hundred and forty-three thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars to four million, four hundred and ten thousand, five hundred dollars. The engineer's estimate for the project was about three million dollars, just north of that. Um, therefore I recommend awarding the contract of this project to Outdoor Enterprise LLC as the lowest and best bid at their price of two million, two hundred forty-three thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars. Outdoor Enterprise also completed phase one of the extension and did a great job.
Thank you, can I have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve Resolution twenty-three eighty-five.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Blakesley and a second by Councilman Folick to approve Resolution twenty-three dash R dash eighty-five as presented. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Forrest?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries six-zero. Next we have Resolution twenty-three dash R dash eighty-six.
And I need to apologize on this one. I misunderstood Mr. Clark when he wrote this and it went back and forth several times. And I noticed that I didn't fix in the title, the, uh, reference to the state of Ohio bid price. This was not a state of Ohio bid price. And I made all the changes except in the title. So my apologies and when I read it, I will skip that part. So this is ordinance, or excuse me, is Resolution twenty-three eighty-six, a resolution waiving competitive building, bidding and authorizing the purchase of Ford Ranger's XLT pickup truck from Bo Townsend Ford at the price of forty-one thousand, six hundred ninety-eight dollars, thirty-four cents.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mrs. McCracken presented on this earlier today. This is to purchase a Ford Ranger pickup truck from Bo Townsend at a cost of forty-one thousand, six hundred ninety-eight dollars. This is to replace a Ford Transit that was a total loss from a collision that, uh, was not the fault of the employee who was driving. And thankfully that employee was also not injured in that, in that accident. Let's see here, the, we looked at local dealerships, um, shopped around, we found this one with the low mileage that fit, fit our specs for servicing our community events. Um, and so that best overall proposal is this twenty-twenty-three Ford Ranger XLT pickup truck at a price of forty-one thousand, six hundred ninety-eight dollars and thirty-four cents.
Thank you, can I get a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution twenty-three dash R dash eighty-six as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Forrest and a second by Councilman Blakesley to approve Resolution twenty-three dash R dash eighty-six as presented. Are there any comments?
Just a real quick one to realize that either, either though, although we're saying forty-one thousand, six ninety-eight minus the twenty-three, we're really only spending eighteen, so. It may have been obvious, but just wanted to point that out.
I was thinking the same thing. All right, call the roll.
Councilmember Forrest?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yeah.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries six-zero. Next we have Resolution twenty-three dash R dash eighty-seven.
Resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Garber Electrical Contractors for the installation of electrical vehicle charging stations at various locations on city properties at their submitted cost proposal of three hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Wendt.
Thank you, Your Honor. The city has the opportunity to install electric vehicle charging stations at several locations on city properties. Um, we're recommending entering into an agreement with Garber Electrical Contractors to purchase and install these stations. AES has a rebate program that would reimburse us for one hundred percent of the cost of installing the stations. Um, we believe that'll be around three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. We're asking for, in the supplemental this evening, um, a thirty thousand dollar contingency. Users of the stations would be able to pay for the service using an app on their phones, tablets, the vehicle itself. Um, city would then collect fees for the usage through the dashboard provided through the project.
Thank you, can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve Resolution twenty-three R eighty-seven as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folick and a second by Councilman Blakesley to approve Resolution twenty-three dash R dash eighty-seven as presented. Are there any comments?
And Mr. Wendt had commented about Mr. Martin's work on this project and just want to recognize him again for all the work, as we heard in the workshop. And I can understand how extensive, especially working with utility, how gruesome that could have been. So just appreciate his work on that.
Thank you. Call the roll.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Forrest?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion passes six-zero. We have no ordinances in the first reading, however, we have a couple in the second reading, the first being ordinance twenty-three dash twenty-nine.
An ordinance amending certain sections of chapter two oh eight of the codified ordinances of the City of Vandelia, Ohio.
Thank you, Mr. Wendt.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. This ordinance was brought before the City Council for consideration in the spring council retreat on May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. It was subsequently brought to a study session in June, twenty twenty-three, and then it was tabled in the first reading in July. The amendments were considered by city council during the fall retreat on September eleventh. The item was tabled at the November sixth, twenty twenty-three meeting, um, and presented for discussion at the November twentieth study session. And then it was passed in a first reading on December fourth, twenty twenty-three by unanimous vote. The, a lot of work has gone into this and so I'll summarize, uh, what the amendment, uh, codified ordinance two oh eight would include. That would permit informal bidding for purchases that are less than or equal to twenty-five thousand dollars, while the current threshold is ten thousand dollars and the state threshold, the state threshold is going up to seventy-five thousand. Permit informal bidding for purchases after advising council of purchases greater than twenty-five thousand but less than fifty thousand, while the current threshold is a range of ten thousand, one dollar to twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Permit formal bidding for purchases of fifty thousand dollars or more, while the current threshold is equal to or greater than twenty-five thousand. Account for the role of public and private cooperative purchasing programs, reduce the requirement for waiving formal bidding by affirmative vote of five council members to four council members, formally legislate and document the practice and affirm the authority of the city manager to make emergency purchases of more than twenty-five thousand dollars and less than or equal to one hundred thousand dollars without prior notice to council or being authorized or directed by council as an emergency measure due to it being necessary in the opinion of the city manager to provide the continued protection of, of public peace, health, safety, welfare, and for reasons relating to the good order of the organization and maintaining continuity of operations. This language aligns with the emergency ordinance language that's used in the state of Ohio for emergency legislation. Um, some examples that I'll reiterate of emergency purchases, um, that I've had to authorize include but are not limited to purchases in response to the Christmas Day flood of the Justice Center last year so that we could maintain, uh, continuity of services, begin remediation and prevent further loss. Rooftop, uh, air conditioning units, uh, servicing the police dispatch communication center, purchases relating to temporary repla, repairs after a sanitary sewer collapse. Purchasing replacement pumps and equipment that would other necessitate a shutdown and foregone revenues at the Aquatic Center or Castle Hills Pool. Emergency repairs to fire apparatus, emergency roof repairs to prevent water infiltration above the basketball court at the Vandelia Rec Center. Other potential emergency purchases that we hope we never need, um, but could be limited to, uh, could include traditional. that we hope we never need, but could be limited to, could include traditional public emergencies, emergency roadway or bridge deck repairs, natural disaster response, purchases necessary in response to a mass casualty event, other unforeseen emergencies. The provision is meant to document the current and long-established practice of the city manager making rare emergency purchases and advising council after the fact. This is meant to be used rarely and sparingly and will continue to be done as so. This provision is not meant and cannot be used to obviate appropriations, which are the responsibility of the legislative body, and as the executive, Chief Executive Officer and Public Safety Director of the City of Vandelia, city manager is able to prudently and objectively identify the need for those emergency purpose purchases. Finally, this establishes by ordinance the guidance that the city manager shall advise the council of emergency purchases exceeding $25,000, and it increases the threshold regarding the city manager's discretion of whether to require bid bonds for contracts, increasing that threshold from $25,000 to $50,000. Thank you.
Thank you. And since this is an ordinance in the second reading, I'll open a public hearing. If anyone would like to make comments on this ordinance, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and your comments. Being none, I'll close the public hearing. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve Ordinance 23-29 in the second reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Fowle and a second by Councilman Ayers to approve Ordinance 23-29 in its second reading. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Fowle?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes. Yes, and the motion passes six-zero. Next, we have Ordinance 23-31 in its second reading.
An ordinance amending the text of the Vandelia zoning code to include various updates and clarifications.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
Thank you, Your Honor. Staff initiated a text amendment, proposed, the proposed amendments to several chapters of the zoning code. Proposed amendments clarify several processes within the code and introduce annual def, additional definitions and update language. Planning Commission reviewed the proposed amendments on November 28th and recommended approval by a vote of five to zero.
All right, thank you. And since this is an ordinance in its second reading, again, I'll open a public hearing. So if anyone would like to comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and your comment. Being none, I will close the public hearing. Can I have a motion?
I move that we approve Ordinance 23-31 in its second reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Fairst and a second by Councilman Blakesley to approve Ordinance 23-31 in its second reading. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Fowle?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries six-zero. Next, we have Ordinance 23-32.
An ordinance amending sections 884.062A, 884.062D, 884.062J, 884.091A1, 884.094, and 884.10C4 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Vandelia concerning required updates passed in Ohio House Bill 33 and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
Thank you, Your Honor. You'll recall that Ms. Huer gave a presentation with Director Leiter at our last meeting. This emergency ordinance includes mandated, not an emergency, this ordinance includes mandated municipal income tax, oh, it is an emergency, my apologies. The, this is mandated municipal income tax ordinance changes and amendments to Chapter 884. This includes sections 884 dot 062, 884 dot 091, 884 dot 094, 884 dot 10.
Thank you. And since this is a ordinance in its second reading, I'll open a public hearing. So if anyone would like to make a comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record and your comment. Close the public hearing. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve Ordinance 23-32, second reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Blakesley and a second by Councilwoman Fairst to approve Ordinance 23-32 in its second reading. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Just a point of clarification, is this being proposed as an emergency ordinance?
No, it's not on the agenda as an emergency.
Well, it is. That's why I just wanted, it's an emergency that went to two readings, but I didn't know if it was, because the motion was just to pass it, so I just wanted to clarify.
Okay. All right. Call the roll.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Fowle?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries six-zero. Next, we have emergency ordinance 23-33.
An ordinance to revise appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Vandelia, Montgomery County, Ohio during the calendar year ending December 31st, 2023, and amending ordinance 22-42 and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is the normal end-of-the-year cleanup supplemental. In 2023, this is the fourth supplemental. We usually have five to seven of these per year, and so Director Leiter gave a good presentation on the contents of this in the study session, and I'll let her testimony stand for this evening unless there are specific questions that you have.
All right. Since this is an emergency ordinance, I'll open a public hearing. So if anyone would like to comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record and your comment. Being none, I'll close the public hearing. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve Ordinance 23-33 as an emergency.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Fowle and a second by Councilman Ayers to approve Ordinance 23-33 as an emergency. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods? Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Fowle?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries six-zero. And it brings us to reports from boards and commissions where we have the civil service meeting minutes of November 30th, 2023. Are there any comments? All right, I'll move on to the November 2023 bill listing in the amount of $3,546,857.38, along with the November expenses over $50,000. We've also have the November purchase card detail in the amount of $22,122.89. Are there any comments? All right, that brings us to council comments, and we'll begin this evening with Mr. McDonald.
Since I wasn't handed the microphone to make fun of Bob, I'll take the opportunity now. I just want to say, Bob, in the last 12 years, it's been, been great working with you, and it was alluded to, but working with you is kind of like sitting on a corporate board. I mean, you just have, have, have that focus and things like that, and I, I enjoyed it very much. And Connie, I really appreciate all your, your practical approach to everything on council. I mean, you looked at stuff, and then you just would take a step back and say, wait a minute, and dissect it, and move forward. So I will miss both of you on council.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure serving with you.
Thank you. Councilman, Councilman, Mr. Went?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would just once again say thank you to Mr. Ayers and Ms. Woods for all of your work. I will say that for both of you, I very much appreciated. One, you've had a, a good and strong, critical approach to proposals. I think I speak on behalf of all of the employees when, when I say that. Both of you have a reputation for supporting the employees and being very reasonable in support of our public servants. And so I look forward to maintaining the relationship that we have also. And I promise this will only take a real five minutes, not a fake five minutes. I would respectfully ask for an executive session to consider certain personnel matters relating to the appointment of an employee in the Division of Fire.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Woods?
I just want to say it's been my pleasure to serve with all of you for the last four years, and I want to wish you a Merry Christmas and a productive New Year.
All right, Councilman Ayers?
Yeah, I'd just like to say in my final words that it truly has been an honor and a privilege to represent the citizens of Vandelia with our city government. I've made some good friends along the way, and I probably made a few enemies along the way, but that just goes with the territory. So.
I mean, you did a good job.
With that, I wish you good luck, God bless, and goodbye. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Blakesley?
Well, it's been an honor and privilege to have worked with both Councilmember, Members Wood and Ayers. It's been great. I've learned a lot actually from both of you, and I appreciate that. And best of luck as you go forward. Looking forward to working with the newly-elected officials, council members, Ms. Dugan and Amber Avlos Weaver. And congrats to all those who have a day dedicated in their honor, which we saw witness of that earlier. And happy holidays to everybody and looking forward to a productive New Year.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Fairst?
Just again, thank you to Councilwoman Woods and Councilman Ayers for the time that you've given to the city. I'm sure people appreciate that. Also to Roger Pratt for all of his years. We had an exciting night tonight. And then thank you again. Congratulations to Ben Borton, Rob Cron, and Officer Dennis for coming on board and getting in the new positions. We look forward to working with you in those new capacities. Also, last week, Vandelia and surrounding areas lost a good friend in Bill Jurgens, passed away. He had been instrumental in a lot of projects. His generosity was just enormous to our community in, in all the different clubs and organizations. He really participated financially in, so he will be missed. That's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilman Fowle?
First, I'd like to make a motion to excuse Vice Mayor Dave Lewis from all of this evening's meetings.
Second.
All right, call the roll.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Fowle?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries six-zero.
Just real quick, congratulations to Mr. Cron and Mr. Borton on their new roles within the organization. Look forward to your continued service with the city in your new capacities. Welcome aboard to Officer Dennis. It was good to see him this evening. Officer Dennis, as a high school student, rode with me several times as a police officer in Inglewood. So it was a little bittersweet tonight to see him sworn in and in the hometown here. So he will, he's a, a great, I'm going to say kid, but he's not a kid. He's a great young man, and I think Vandelia made a solid decision in appointing him as a police officer. So congratulations to him. And just to wish everyone a happy holidays. I think, you know, when you reflect back over the past year, and I know it's going to be highlighted in our annual report that residents will get next week, the city has accomplished a tremendous amount of success this year, and I think we've got a lot of momentum going into 2024. So I look forward to working with the new council member elects and fellow council members as we continue to make Vandelia a great place to live, work, and play. So thank you. Have a good holiday.
All right, thank you. And I also would just like to thank everyone that we recognized tonight with, you know, proclamations or swearing in on their new positions. The City of Vandelia couldn't operate if we didn't have the fine folks like the ones we recognized here this evening. Also like to, again, as everyone else said, thank everyone on city council for serving this year. I appreciated all the work and dedication that has gone into it. I know we've had probably more meetings this last year than we ever have in the past, but I appreciate the effort that everyone puts into it. I'm looking forward to next year being a better year, and also looking forward to serving with our new council members in the future here. And with that, I will conclude my comments and just begin Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays to everyone.
Executive session.
You thought I was going to forget.
Yes, sir. I was worried about you slapping the gavel and calling us adjourned.
Can I have a motion to go into executive session to discuss a public employees?
I think Bob should make the motion.
Slow move.
No, you go ahead and make the motion, Bob.
The motion would be to, an executive session to consider certain personnel matters relating to the appointment of an employee in the Division of Fire.
Go ahead, Bob.
I move that we do what you said.
Nice second.
All right, I have a, I have a like-hearted motion by Councilman Ayers and second by Councilwoman Woods to go into executive session. Unless there's comments, let's just call the roll.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Fowle?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion passes six-zero.